The United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Roll call, please.
I know, but then Bernadette is...
Yes, sir. Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Chaney.
Present.
Alderman Milner.
Present.
Alderman Franklin.
Present.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Present.
Alderman Fauch.
Present.
Alderman Mills.
Present.
Alderman Davidson is excused. Mayor's airing.
Present. All right, thank you. We have a forum. All right, ceremonial matters this evening. We've got Communities for All Ages Silver Recognition. Ms. Lauren, I'm going to ask you to go ahead and come on up.
Can you hear me? Okay, great. Well, thanks for having me. My name is Lauren Schomburg. I am the Program Manager for KC Communities for All Ages. For anyone not familiar with this program, we are an age-friendly city initiative, so we provide tools to help local governments in the Kansas City region kind of recognize their role in supporting their older residents. We do that by providing technical assistance, education, and then we have a formal recognition, which is what we're doing this evening, formal recognition program to cities that take meaningful steps to be more inclusive of residents of all ages. So our materials are structured around five topics: public outdoor spaces and buildings, housing and commercial development, transportation and mobility, socialization, communication and contribution, and community and health services. So tonight I will be awarding the city the silver level, and essentially what that means is I worked with many city staff and a couple, we had some residents and other kind of subject matter experts to go through a self-assessment process. So for each topic, we held one meeting. We looked at a set of sample policies, best practices pulled from communities around the world and kind of talked through like what could those look like here in Harrisonville, what are you doing, what maybe, where opportunities maybe exist to improve. So I do have some copies of the final report that I can leave here for anybody to look at, but I think with that we'll do the award. I don't really know. It's a certificate. This is a silver level. There's one more level after this, which is applying an age lens to a major city plan. I think Christina and Grant have some things in the works there. So congratulations to the city. Great work. It's been awesome working with you all. You have amazing staff, people, by the way. Kudos to them. Really helpful, really intelligent, really open to the idea of this program. So it's been great.
You do have a great staff.
We do.
I think the city...
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, next up, we have the approval of the minutes for the Board of Aldermen Regular Meeting, April 7th. Those were in your packet.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Alderman Chaney with a second from Alderman Milner. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Those stand approved. Next, we have the Board of Aldermen Work Session from April 7th.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Alderman Franklin, second from Alderman Turner. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Or any opposed? Those stand approved. All right, thank you. I need, we also need to approve the minutes from the Board of Aldermen Close Session from April 7th.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion from Alderman Chaney, a second from Alderman Fauch. Roll call, please.
Alderman Chaney.
Aye.
Alderman Fauch.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
abstained.
Alderman Franklin.
Yea.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
I abstained because I didn't get to read them.
And Alderman Davidson is excused.
All right, thank you. Stand approved. All right, first agenda item this evening is the second reading of Council Bill 12.
Council Bill 12, an ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville approving a rezoning from Agriculture A District to Single Family Residential R1 District for 32.88 acres of land located south of Matt Street in the existing East Elm Estates subdivision, east of the Meadowview subdivision, and west of the Villas of Eastern Hills subdivision in the City of Harrisonville, Cass County, Missouri.
All right, thank you.
Just quick, real quick. I haven't had any other emails or correspondence on this item. I know we had a few things we were working through. I know that we've had a couple folks that reached out and tried to put them in touch with Public Works on some of the questions about sidewalk and settling and utilities. So we are trying to evaluate each step as we go, but see no reason for the rezone not to be approved, and the preliminary plat was approved at the previous meeting.
All right, thank you. Any further questions for Christina on this? All right. We'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion when approved.
Motion from Alderman Fauch.
Second.
Second from Alderman Milner. Roll call, please.
Alderman Fauch.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
Alderman Chaney.
Aye.
Alderman Franklin.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Mills.
Aye.
Alderman Davidson is excused.
All right, thank you. Council Bill 12 is now ordinance 3720. Next up, I'm going to open a public hearing on special use permit for outdoor storage of empty and unused roll-off containers at land located at 2101 Clearwater Drive. Christina?
Good evening again. Jump right into the applicant seeking approval of the special use permit for outdoor storage of empty and unused roll-off containers on land located at 2101 Clearwater Drive and parcel 1331-050000008.001. It's in the record, as shown on the attached zoning and aerial maps. A review of some of the key issues, looking at the Google Earth images, it's, yeah, indicates that there's been outside storage on this property since at least 2003. Section 240.050G was established in 2022 and became effective October 17th, 2024. That has to do with the screening of dumpsters and trash receptacles and such. Our codes enforcement officer has been working with the property owner to bring the property into compliance. Kind of getting into the analysis part of the staff report, the properties are currently zoned M1 light industrial district. The use of the contractor's yard or storage of boat recreational vehicles and other vehicles, while not the exact same use, they've still had that storage component, so staff looked at that as a compatible use. Both of those uses are allowed with approved special use permit in this district. Additionally, looked at definitions, section 405.030, outdoor storage, which defines the keeping in an unroofed open area of any goods, junk material, merchandise, or vehicles in the same place for more than 24 hours, which this is keeping of his merchandise. Permitted uses being defined as any building structure or use which on the effective date of this chapter complies with the applicable regulations governing permitted uses of the zoning district in which such building structure or use is located. And also wanted to point out in the staff report that there is another somewhat similar use, a solid waste transfer station that was approved by special use permit in 2019. So kind of getting into the details of section 204.050G, quoting a section of it, the, it says, "All non-residential projects, garbage slash trash receptacles, containers, or compactors and grease recycling collectors of any size visible from a public thoroughfare must be screened from view of the public way or thoroughfare. The screen is to be a wall, solid fence, or natural barrier of a minimum of six feet in height on any side of the collection area which may be visible from a public way or thoroughfare adjacent to the collection area." Skip down a little bit, and it talks about chain link slat screening is only allowed in the M1 and M2 zoning, and the screening must be opaque. So this is M1, so they could potentially use the chain link slat screen for this area. Also, looking into the analysis part in the conference of plan, the properties, there's two different parcels, are shown as two different place types: employment light and preservation slash rule. According to page 34 of the city's 2040 Conference of Plan, the preservation rule place type represents areas in Harrisonville that are not expected to substantially develop over the next 20 years. These areas may include environmentally sensitive areas such as floodways and woodlands. And while the light employment areas are intended to support formats of employment that are not appropriately integrated into a downtown or mixed-use setting, such as office parks, institutional campuses, or light manufacturing hubs, or, you know, similar use, staff does not want to see the storage of these roll-off containers or other similar structures unscreened. However, we're not unreasonable. We do understand the request to allow for additional time for the ongoing site improvements to occur. There are currently land disturbance permits open. The property owner's been bringing in dirt and fill to kind of level the property to improve it, and has intentions of installing the screen after that is done. So we don't want to encourage prolonged period of code not being met as well, so considering the other similar uses mentioned earlier, staff deems it appropriate to recommend a short-term special use permit to allow use to continue while site improvements are being made for the required fencing to be installed. So in support of the proposed special use permit, the property owner is attempting to come into compliance with zoning regulations. These properties have been utilized for outdoor storage since 2003, and there are similar or compatible uses in the immediate area. On Thursday, April 17th, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted 5 to 0, and I'm going to note right now that I have to correct my staff report in the ordinance, packet pages 17 and 42, because I had prepared this before the meeting on those, and I had 8 to 0, so it should say 5 to 0, to recommend approval of the proposed special use permit with the conditions listed in staff's report. So staff's recommendation is for approval of the proposed special use permit with the following two conditions: the applicant shall install the required screening once the land disturbing activities have been completed and settling has occurred, and two, the time limit associated with this special use permit shall be five years, at which time a new special use permit is required to continue without the required screening in place. We're hoping that within that time period, the land disturbing activities will be complete, the settling will have happened, and the fence can be completed as well. It seems reasonable. I didn't want to make it too short that we run into a problem and have to come back.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Christina from the board?
So Christina, this is visible from Clearwater and any other streets?
I don't believe so. I think it's primarily Clearwater that it is visible. It does back up to the rail line. So obviously, on the rail, you can see it, but there's not going to be much there. Going back through some of my other images to look at stuff, but I don't believe it is beyond Clearwater.
That's what it looked like to me on the map.
Yeah, there's too much, probably distance to see much from Anaconda, although you could some.
Are there any questions, other questions from the board on this? No. Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody here tonight that would want, like to speak about this? All right, seeing none, I am going to close the public hearing on that, and we will continue with the first reading of Council Bill 14.
Council Bill 14, an ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville approving a special use permit for the outdoor storage of empty and unused roll-off containers on land located at 2101 Clearwater Drive and parcel number 13-31-05-000-000-008.001 in the City of Harrisonville, Cass County, Missouri.
All right, thank you. So that'll come back at our May 5th board meeting for a second reading. All right, next up, I'm going to open another public hearing. Public hearing is open on Mechanic Street Overlay District Boundaries. Christina, you're back up.
Okay, kind of a quick little history with this. Actually, that's most of what this one is, is history. This was brought to our attention by a fairly recent inquiry into potential commercial development. It prompted us to look into the Mechanic Street Overlay District, and after researching the history of said district regulations that were approved December 5th, 2011, staff realized that the Mechanic Street Overlay District Boundaries were never formally adopted. The regulations that were established in 2011 are not being changed. This is only to formally adopt the boundaries over the residential portions along Mechanic Street as originally intended. The Mechanic Street Overlay provides requirements for the residential properties to be converted to limited commercial uses while maintaining a residential aesthetic. Does not require them to, just allows them the ability to. Staff is proposing, again, to officially establish the Mechanic Street Overlay District Boundaries as shown on the attached zoning and aerial maps. I'm going to go over a handful of the key issues and previous actions that are worth noting related to this. Discussions on the original Harrisonville and necessary zoning ordinance amendments pertaining thereto began as early as June 17th, 2010. The focus was on the residentially zoned properties. Also worth noting, the January 20th, 2011 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, quoting from the minutes, Mr. Kiodini asked if the square properties would need to comply as well. Mr. DeLuca, one of my predecessors, said they would not because they are not residential structures, so the square wouldn't be in this district. The following Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, February 17th of 2011, it was decided to start with the Mechanic Street before moving on to other areas within the original Harrisonville boundaries. And it should be noted that Walter Bruins, who I'm assuming was one of the commissioners back then based on my reading of the minutes, asked about the areas where it is already mostly businesses, and Mr. DeLuca said he would put some text together that excludes the areas that are zoned CBD 1 and CBD 2 because businesses are already there. So a review of the minutes on this is clear that they were never intended to include the commercially zoned properties. On September 15th, 2011, Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing over the code amendments to establish the Mechanic Street Overlay District and associated design guidelines. The staff report stated that the actual establishment of the boundaries of the overlay would occur after establishment of the district. So it went to the board, November 21st of 2011, and they held a public hearing to establish the overlay district and associated design guidelines. The ordinance for the code amendment and resolution for the design guidelines were continued to the next meeting, December 5th, 2011. The staff report stated that the proposal would not, sorry, would amend the zoning ordinance but would not establish the boundaries of the overlay district. If the board approved the ordinance and design guidelines, then staff would have a legal description compiled, and the zoning district overlay amendment would be presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Board of Aldermen. So on December 5th of 2011, the Board of Aldermen meeting, they changed the minimum lot width from 50 feet to 45 feet, and approved the code amendment by ordinance 3197, and adopted the design guidelines by resolution number 50-11. The boundaries were supposed to have come back through public hearing process, but never did. Rather, the focus of the Planning and Zoning Commission shifted to the remainder of the original Harrisonville neighborhoods, and over the course of time, from 2012 through 2015, they went back and forth with lots of neighborhood meetings and discussion having to do with the R1B and R2B and that process that established this. The Mechanic Street Overlay District regulations were specifically written to address residentially zoned properties that front on Mechanic Street within the boundaries of the original town of Harrisonville to allow for limited commercial uses and the retention of residential appearance. And I do have listed section 405.630.D.1, which references rezoning criteria, but I didn't go into details there since we're not changing dramatically. We're trying to establish the boundaries. They've actually been applied in this way, is my understanding, since the beginning of 2012. This will clean up some areas that were shown on the boundaries in the last few years that should not have been, and make it clearer. The establishment of the overlay district boundaries are similar to establishing a zoning district and have their own set of regulations that sit on top of the standard zoning districts for property that are, they are applied to. So you'll have your standard R1 or R1B, R2B, in addition to the overlay, and that has not changed. A copy of these criteria are included within the packet, along with the Mechanic Street Overlay District regulations. Again, I need to do a correction to my staff report and the ordinance. The Planning and Zoning met on Thursday, April 17th, and the vote was 5 to 0 to recommend approval of the proposed Mechanic Street Overlay District boundaries as proposed. So changing the count that I had on packet page 47 and packet page 56 of the staff report and the ordinance from 8 to 0 to 5 to 0. Staff recommends approval of the proposed Mechanic Street Overlay District boundaries as shown on the attached zoning map.
Any questions for Christina? All right, this is a public hearing. Is there anybody here present that would like to speak on this? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, and we will continue with the first reading of Council Bill 15.
Council Bill 15, an ordinance of the Board of Aldermen of the City of Harrisonville establishing the Mechanic Street Overlay District boundaries as identified in the attached zoning map in the City of Harrisonville, Cass County, Missouri.
All right, thank you. So Council Bill 15 will be brought back for the second reading on May 5th, or May 5th Alderman meeting. All right, thank you. Next up, we have Aldermen and Committee Reports. I'm going to start with you, Alderman Mills, since, so I don't forget about you there.
Okay. Just to comment on that overlay district, because I was, I assume, chairman of the Planning and Zoning back then, and boy, I'd almost, that, boy, we spent a lot of time on that. She brought back a lot of memories there, and Walt and all those people. But why we didn't finish that thing, I got no clue, because I'd bet we did, but I guess we didn't. So that's just interesting. But took a long time to get to the end on that one. The other thing I've got is, just, I don't know how you thank MODOT, but, because it's rare when they do stuff like this, but they did a great job down there on the corner of South and Independence Street. They were in town, new curbs and sidewalks, and then they carried that on down to South Commercial, sidewalks in front of, fixing those in front of Big Tank and Sutherland's and their half of the, those two bridges, and then the sidewalks all the way up the hill to I-49. It was like, I ran into Carl and said, who was doing that? Because I didn't remember that in our budget. And he said, MODOT. And it scared, he had to ask too, who are you people? So it was, thanks, thanks, MODOT. That's all I got.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, Alderman Milner.
Oh, I have nothing. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman Dorhoff.
Nothing this evening. Thanks.
And Alderman Fauch.
No report.
No report. Alderman Turner. Ma'am, we're on a roll. We're giving the city administrator way too much time. Alderman Franklin, I know you've got something.
First of all, I wanted to give a shout out to J.C. of the Street Department and thank him for, we had a sewer drain across the street from where we live, and it was backed up and overflowing quite a bit from all the rain we had this weekend. So they got out there early this afternoon and got it taken care of. So I appreciate that. And I wanted to, our last park board meeting, we met a young gentleman by the name of Eric Jonico, and he is a young individual who is interested in the skate park project that will be coming down the road here in the near future. He has some great ideas for design work, landscaping, and he's offered to help with fundraising as well. So seems very nice. He's just an all-round nice young kid. So it was nice to talk with him, and he's got some friends who are looking forward to getting that on the map and start working on that. And then on June 3rd, the Dog Park Committee will be hosting a Dog Park Appreciation Day on, like I said, it's on a Tuesday, June 3rd. It will be at 6 o'clock. We are going to be just having some hot dogs and roasting hot dogs out there for the people who originally got the dog park started a few years ago when we started that project. So anyway, more items will be coming. I'll let you know. All will be joined, but it is slated right now for June 3rd, Tuesday night at 6 o'clock. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Alderman Chaney.
I just want to say thanks to our Parks Department. They're a bunch of real go-getters, and I appreciate them. And that's it.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, city administrator, you're up.
Harrisonville Square Neighborhood Redevelopment is having a public meeting on the 24th. If you haven't ever been to one of those, Alderman Fauch does a great job.
Yeah, I forgot to put in a plug. Yeah. Public meeting Thursday, this Thursday, right?
This Thursday, yes.
6 o'clock at the Chamber Office.
And so it's really taken off and really getting a lot more applicants in for that program, so we're glad to see that move forward. I remember the Alderman Retreat on the 28th, which is next Monday, and then, some of you give me that look, like, what? Then the Jane Street, the Blueberry Water Improvement, Stormwater Improvement Project will start July the 7th, as well as the Ash Street Bridge over Town Creek Project, which is a fairly large project, will start July the 7th as well. They first told me mid-June, and I went, no, 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 no. We've got to get past 4th of July. So don't want 5,000 people trying to get into the park and Ash Street's closed. So that will be July 7th on both of those. South Service Area Sanitary Steel Project, so as you all know, we have that contractor on liquidated damages. He's still not meeting some of the deadlines, and so it is now under legal review. So we'll be having some more information and things on that in the upcoming months or days. The Airport Runway Project, we received a grant to 95.5 federal grant for the trees that FAA once cut down up and around the airport and across the street there, over on the other side of the highway. And so I signed off on that grant actually last week for those funds. And then I-49 Mechanic Street from the Justice Center East to Commercial Street Project, the city staff's refining the scope project, because you know, we received 4.3 million in federal funds for that. It's a $5.3 million project. Now we're submitting the rest of that for cost share with MODOT to minimize our required matching funds for that whole project. Again, just remind everybody, it's a MODOT road that we're working to get the funds for. Again, just remind everybody, it's a MoDOT road that we're working to get the funds for. Then we had the hazardous waste event. We had 190 participate in that event, 151 participated in the brush drop-off. We had the Community Center hosted the Coalition of Chambers Luncheon with Representative Mark Alfred there. There was no incident. There was only one protester with flags and an orange jumpsuit. I want to thank Lieutenant Harris for the hard work and making sure that was taken care of, as well as the Sheriff's Office and the sheriff working with us and providing staff for that event as well. So we're thankful for all them. Staff remitted the deteriorating press box at North Park and also lifted the dugout at North Park. As you know, all those will be going away here in the near future, and those had some big problems that needed to come down now, so staff took care of that. The Easter event that they participated with Love the Square had 200 kids for that Easter event. RFQ for Municipal Judge closed Friday, had five applicants for that position. The mayor's in review of those, and we bring in forward a, a appointment to you all in the near future. And then Comcast has informed us that they are planning to break ground by the end of this month or mid-May. Their plan is to lay fiber throughout the whole city in a two-to-three-year, two-to-three-year period. So I have reported that to you, that's what they said. And then staff is, economic development staff are working with a large retailer to the south of the community as well. And so with that, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
All right, thank you very much. Questions from the media? Nothing. Thank you for good seeing you here. Thank you for coming out tonight. All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn.
And a motion from Alderman Chaney.
I'll second.
Second from Alderman Franklin. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we are adjourned from regular sessions. Go ahead and take about 10 minutes, grab some refreshments, and we're going to kick